Yep, call this meeting to order. Please rise for the question. Welcome, everybody. Approval of board meeting minutes for October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Almost been approval of board meeting minutes for October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded for the approval of board meeting minutes for October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded for the approval of meeting agenda. Is there any? Discussion?
Are there any changes?
Um, we're gonna go ahead. Actually, I will say that we do not need executive session tonight.
So I move to amend the, sorry, agenda to strike executive session.
Hang on a second.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded to amend the agenda to scratch the executive session for tonight. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Think you have to approve that, yeah.
Approve the-
Actual meeting.
Oh.
Agenda. As, as amended.
Okay.
Cause we just approved the amendment.
Yep, so I just, okay, so. Uh, approval of the meeting, the agenda, the amended meeting agenda. There any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the consent agendas, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With special items, CTE Strategic Plan, Kristi Kershaw.
Cause they, uh, changed all of the submissions. Right again.
Uh.
Right again.
Alright. I always forget, sorry, how to, how to do presentation on this, on campus.
Um, next to the share button, it says present. At the top.
Oh, right, it's covered in my thing.
That's a really cool photo.
Yeah, that was taken, um,
We have to-
Tyler, Tyler took that coming into school one morning, isn't that cool?
That is cool.
Yeah. So, yeah, our, our vision is to grow our economy and get our students prepared for in-demand careers. Uh, that supports them with a lovable family wage. So tonight, really, I just wanted to present with you a little bit about what we've done. Uh, where we're going for this, this coming year. Um, and so it's our strategic plan on how we're gonna move forward to, uh, train our, our students. Our mission is to transform our students, uh, into self-reliant adults by providing them the opportunities to explore, develop, and implement strategies for lifelong learning. L M C T E will provide value-added experience in leadership, civic engagement, work-based learning, career preparation, twenty-first century skill development, uh, through the industry, relevant, relevant curriculum, dual college credit options, and industry-recognized certifications. We also have extended resume building opportunities that will be facilitated through FFA, Skills MSA, and FPLA. And my bad, I do not have HOS on there, and I should, because they are our new, uh, student leadership organization that we have for health sciences. Our staff this year, we did, um, have a little bit of change-up in staff, um, but we did hire, uh, three new teachers, um. We, uh, Mr. John Guerrero is our media arts teacher, doing a fabulous, fabulous job. Um, and then we have, uh, James Palervo that is in our construction lab and natural resources innovation academy, again, doing a great job. And then we added Connor McNeil, uh, into the CTE program for, um, our physical fitness, um, and sports trainer program that we're developing. Um, last time I talked to you about some of the grant pursuits that we're going for, you can see some big ticket items in there, is the hundred thousand dollar grant for health sciences. I'll explain that a little bit more. Um, and then we have, some of those are just regular grants that we get, like the Carl Perkins, uh, that we use for different, um, industry-recognized certifications, professional development, and things like that. Uh, last year, we were able to secure a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in grants, uh, and that was a variety of, um, equipment for our natural resources and ag mechanics manufacturing program through CASE, which is curriculum in agriculture science. Uh, we also, uh, secured, uh, Perkins Reserve for forestry program equipment and, um, some additional funds with Carl Perkins in our, um, Core Plus Aerospace. In red, you can see that some of our big purchases, uh, we really focused on, on safety and security, so we added, um, AEDs, uh, for CTE areas, so that every shop has access. Uh, we also have one that is at the school garden, and then, um, one that can be portable, uh, for trips. Uh, the security system, we added that to down in the, um, the back shop area, that wasn't in the initial, um, boat, so we got that secured. Um, our forestry equipment, we also, um, bought a heavy equipment simulator, um, which we can add new programs to. So right now, it is for shovel operation, we can add forklift, we can add, um, others as we go throughout the years. Um, and we have a station set up in, in our ag office for students to, to work on that. Uh, we're also continuing to update some laptop carts, you may ask, worldwide laptop carts instead of Chromebooks. Um, as we move forward for Office three sixty, uh, three sixty-five, it's really important for us to have the laptops, those are really what's gonna help us move that, I mean, if I had my ultimate goal, we would, high school would be Microsoft, not Google. Um, but, that's a transition. Uh, we're also working on three D printers and supplies, and we, um, updated our, uh, Early Bird Cafe with the, uh, espresso machine and grater. Going back to the three D printers, we're also, uh, new this year, we're creating a high school maker space, it's on the second floor, and so that's gonna be having, um, three D printers and, um, a plotter, some open space, so that students can go in and do some projects that can connect to uh, different experiences for all our subject matters. So, we also had a lot of students working, um, for worksite learning, we had twenty-seven students that worked. Um, it made approximately a hundred and sixty thousand, we had seven apprentices last year, um, that completed, uh, over seven thousand hours for almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we actually, we have five apprentices, our first cohort, that earned their two thousand hour journeyman card, so that was very exciting. This year, we'll celebrate that again, um, in January, and we'll have, um, of the seven, unfortunately, not all of them finished the program, so we'll have four that will complete the two thousand hour, um, journeyman card. We also had, uh, guest speakers in current college readiness, union, military, uh, we also hosted a leadership, uh, job interview event. Um, and then, if you look at our automation technician youth apprenticeship, um, our cohort for last year was Sierra Pacific, Pacific Iron Works, Pacific Vineyard Capital Industrial Bond Company. Uh, this year, we have, uh, two seniors and three juniors, the juniors is a, is kind of a nuance for us, but it's, it's working out really well. Um, and that is with Sierra Pacific Bond Company, Capital Industrial, and the Small Planet, so we added a new business that is in green energy, very excited about that.
You're gonna point out that, uh, magazine cover.
Oh, sure.
By, uh, the, uh, association, um, AWB, the Association of Washington Business, that's the Washington State Chamber of Commerce, uh, or like the top innovative programs in the entire state.
Yeah, so, uh, we had Isaac, uh, was on, was featured on the front there, and then inside, they have different pictures of our students working. And primarily, they were at Sierra Pacific that they were featuring that on. So our kids are kind of famous across the state. Uh, we also hosted our current college readiness speakers with, uh, trades colleges, military, um, including a variety, you can see a variety of services there, uh, we also, again, once again, hosted our career connection day for tenth graders. This is where we had seventy-seven industry partners, where we, uh, took the students first to the Grace Harbor College campus to see their programs, and then from there, students went to seven different industry sites to see a variety of jobs in action. Um, and you'll see there that, wow, we have Invenergy, which was new for us this year, uh, but you can kind of see that there's a variety of different career pathways. And also within that, like, you know, you think of Summit Pacific Medical Center, we didn't just want to focus on medical jobs, we also wanted to focus that, yeah, you got HR, you got AT, you got all these different jobs and careers that can happen within all of these different industries. Uh, we also invited over forty partners to our Take Flight Career, uh, Career Connection Fair. Um, that's helped hosted by our, um, Elma Flight Foundation, uh, we had colleges, military, and industry partners. We had some, um, people there to offer jobs for students for the summer, and we also had other people there to recruit for future careers, and what does it take to get into those careers? Um, so it was, it was well, well, well-taken, uh, we had, all of our high school kids went through, freshmen through seniors. Uh, we, we lessened the amount of time for freshmen, just because we knew they weren't quite ready for all of those things, but they got to see things in action, and I think that was really important. Um, we also continue to do industry tours, uh, through our, our manufacturing program, we also took advantage last year of the Pacific Logging Congress that only comes up this way, like, every four years, and that was amazing. We also, uh, continue to work with WSU, uh, School of Medicine, and all of our, our health partners for a seventh grade health mentorship and expo, in fact, we had one this morning, um, WSU came all the way over, and then we worked with Summit Pacific, uh, East Graves Harbor, uh, Fire and Rescue, uh, Kevin Farr, former graduate, that has his dental practice that brought hygienist, Summit Pacific, um, I think I said that already, Elia McGrath Gordon, um, practice, uh, practice veterinarian. So, and then we had, we had a, uh, Dave Mueller there too, so we had former grads that are coming now, and then showcasing some of these different careers with our students, so again, um, if you see it, you can be it, and that's kind of the goal there, so very excited to continue that, that partnership. Our ag co-op, uh, continues to grow, uh, we had twenty-two teens this year, and a student manager, uh, that earned, uh, their money, their, their stipend, and then we also had, um, uh, ten, ten teenagers market rabbits through the Grace Harbor County Youth Livestock Auction, um, and earn additional monies. Uh, we also have many students that are in supervised agriculture, uh, experiences, that includes, uh, job placement, entrepreneurship, like raising livestock, um, and exploratory research. Uh, we also really focus on life readiness, uh, you know, our mentorships with WSU School of Medicine, we have, we host a youth addiction family night. Again, that's in coordination with WSU School of Medicine, but that's all of our medical partners and, um, uh, community youth awareness, um, partners that we host that. STEM Family Night, Spanish Celebration Event, a CTSO Winter Festival, where we're getting mostly middle school students onto the high school campus, engaged in some of our shops and some fun projects. Uh, Community Health Capstone, and STEM Fair, this was really cool, where we actually had our students create, um, analyze, um, community needs and create a proposal of what, uh, we should be developing for the Elma community, um, in order for for healthier habits, and that ranged anywhere from a third space for youth, um, to mental health, uh, support, everything. And we were able to work with Summit Pacific Medical Center with their youth collaboration, uh, that we sit on and, and are a part of. We also continued our, uh, WSU, uh, extension services with Smart Foods Labs, where we took seventh graders and, uh, seniors into our foods lab, and they learned how to make healthy, quick meals. Um, and we participated in the Grace Harbor Ca-, uh, College Art Show and had winners. Um, we also continue to offer a variety of dual credits, um, you can see there that we offer about a hundred, we have a hundred and six different college credits uh, for twenty-eight different, uh, courses, um, and it is a savings for kids, um, if they choose to, um, take advantage of those credits, um, some do and some don't, not all the credits technically work for maybe their career pathway, but it's an opportunity for our students to realize that, hey, I'm getting a college credit, oh, if I can do that, maybe I do have, I, I can, I can do college. We also have our AJF Apprenticeship MOU, WSU School of Medicine MOU, um, and our Grace Harbor, uh, Fire and Rescue, Rescue MOU, and our, and Terry Peck, uh, Terry, Perry Tech Institute, where, uh, students who go through our manufacturing program will get a thousand dollar scholarship, scholarship to go to Perry Tech. So we continue to work on all these things, and you'll see there down below that we're gonna be working with Summit Pacific Medical Center for our nursing assistant training program. Um, hope to have that to the school board next month, and hope to start that program soon, I'll explain that. And then we're also re-coordinating our carpenters' union, which is now Western, um, Western State's Regional, uh, Council of Carpenters to re-engage in our pre-apprenticeship and training program and MOU. We continue to offer industry certificates, um, a wide breadth there, uh, we also have different graduation pathways through CTE that has a variety of options for our students. Um, and, again, we continued, I think, to have some great, wonderful CTSO, uh, success, we took all, uh, hosts started this last year, so they, they attended, and more as, as a participation, but all our other three CTSOs, FPLA, FFA, and Skills MSA, all were state-level and champions, and then also have teams that competed at nationals. Along with all the community service activities and engagement that we do, um, for that. In progress, um, we, we do have the Innovation Academy up and running, Natural Resources and Manufacturing, um, that's where our students are in a block class for the day, um, there's tw- twenty-five of them, um, that are, right now, it's, it's moving very well. Uh, we, we officially started our fire, fire science cadet program this fall, uh, we have eleven students, and two of those are girls, I'm very excited, and they're juniors and seniors, and Chief Ward is super excited, cause I think five of them are seniors, who will be eighteen before June, and so he's looking to start an EMT training for them. So truly, once they get done with this program, they'll have their firefighter one credential, plus working towards their EOT, and they're, they're off and running, and hopefully they stay around. Um, we also started, um, our financial maths, where our students, be, besides, uh, pre-calculus and calculus, they can earn college credit for financial one-seventy-four, um, in, in math, and that's a huge, huge step for us to get our students ready for college, cause math is a barrier.
Seventy percent of our graduates should have five credits of college-level math done, and if they're in a non-math-required major, it means they're done with math for the rest of their life.
Yep.
So every Elma graduate would have that. Seventy percent of the Elma graduates should have all college math completed before they ever show up on that college campus.
We also, uh, moved our seventh grade science into CTE, so we have, uh, Katie Better and Crystal Fielding overseeing that, and it's going great. Um, we added the beginning sports trainer with Connor McNeil. Um, fully implemented our High School Beyond Plan with School Mix, this is a new program that the state, um, has said that this is across the whole state, everyone will use this platform. So we're, we're trying to start, well, we're not trying, we are starting it two years early before the state fully implements it. And then added hosts this year too, or last year. Goals yet to do, um, continue to add career pathways to the Innovation Academy, we, we're, um, uh, moving forward with health sciences and education. Uh, right now, we're in full breadth work, uh, developing the nursing assistant certification training program through some, with Summit Pacific Medical Center. We're in the process of like a seventy-page application with, um, Elma School District and Summit Pacific Medical S- Center to propose to Board of Nursing, and then they take it to their panel, we're hoping to have it done by, before Thanksgiving, and they will review it at their next panel discussion, December ninth, and then we'll either get a-
You have to have a, you have to be eighteen and have a high school diploma to become an NAC. What is the current role?
Actually, right now, they don't have to be, um, eighteen to work, and the goal would be is that we can have students that are sixteen and seventeen-year-olds take this program, get the certification in Summit Pacific, this is a test run for these kids, cause we're gonna actually have a Summit Pacific Registered Nurse that teaches the program, and has them, um, on campus, at the high school and at the hospital. And, uh, students, once they get their credential, we can work them into, um, be in working at the hospital under the age of fifteen.
So the idea of being an expansion of our manufacturing registered apprenticeship, now we have the pathway for the nursing, so as we've been building them all out. And this would be, how many small districts could get the NAC program in the state?
This one, uh, through the state legislation, they are, they're, uh, wanting two programs to be the pilot, two dual programs to be the pilot, one on the side and one on the west side, and, uh, we're in line to be the west side pilot. So. Um, very excited, still learning a lot from it, and we'll, we'll see as we go, but, um, uh, I, it's got a lot of great potentials, and then the cool thing about this is that this is not a one-stop shop for the kids. This hopefully gets their foot in the door, they're starting to get, um, training and pay, that continues their education through college. And then, um, the Board of Nursing is also, uh, implementing, uh, LPN apprenticeship. So you see how this could, we could actually be training our students, I guess they said, like in the old days, where you're actually training them with, through experience, instead of, you still have the theory in book, but there's a little bit more balance with, um, experience and on the job training. Uh, your grant, we, we got that grant for seven years, um, it'll be an incredible amount of, uh, money and opportunities to our school and our students, uh, roughly a half million dollars a year, that's gonna help, um, hire some staff, and then also, uh, take our students on a variety of college and post-secondary visits, um, across the state. Um, we'll continue working on internships for juniors and seniors, uh, want to sustain and strengthen current programs and CTSOs, and continue to update our classrooms with technology, um, and a variety of ways that creates a, a positive learning environment. And that is what I have for our updates. We have any questions?
I'm just curious, on the AEDs that are down to shops, are the kids, um, briefed on how to use those? I know they're pretty basic on how to use them, but do the kids get any training on that?
They do, we do it, uh, traditionally through our ninth grade, um, health classes, so all ninth graders will have that training, and then, uh, we are, certain shop classes, programs will re-emphasize and retrain that, cause those are only good for two years anyway. Um, and in fact, we just took all of our, um, teach, our trainers, our certificated trainers, teachers, um, and put them through HeartSaver, uh, training, um, instead of Red Cross, we did that for financial reasons and some things, but we will now be able to have all of our students, ninth graders, for sure, uh, HeartSaver, and the goal is to have them graduate with um, a current CPR and first aid card too. And in the future, we may be able to, as health sciences under CTE, have it, we're all seventh graders also get that. So every two years, we're, then, we, we're hoping that they would be well-trained, and it's second nature to them, instead of just one and done.
Exciting stuff, yeah, good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, we're, um, yeah, I mean, it's, I think the models and the pathways now are, they're building upon each other. If you have a model that nobody else in the state has, and it's functional, so then, if you've done a great job working with the state to say, hey, it seems that you have experience doing this where nobody else does, do you mind running another program? Hey, and then it seems like you have experience where nobody else does, do you mind running another program? And I think just the success builds upon success, and it's just been a really great job. And like I said, no one has the apprenticeship in our area, now no one will have, maybe if we pull this on, we'll find out December ninth. Now your anxiety is high.
Well, we're pulling for you.
Well, and I will just, I wanna just give kudos to Summit Pacific and Roxanne Sickles, she is the RN that's working on that. And, um, she's done a fabulous job going through all the curriculum and everything like that, they, they want everything lined up and ready to go, and it's, and you would think that, that everything's already kind of cookie cutter and would be ready to go for any school, it is not, and that's essentially why there's a pilot program. Cause I think they're trying to figure out how do we get this going in more schools, uh, instead of, not just relying on, uh, skills, skill centers or community technical colleges.
Yeah. So is there a lot of kids that are, like, excited and anticipating this happening, and?
We have totally promoted it, because I'm, you know, it's one of those things.
Right.
I, you know, I, we're, I've already had it put out to the counselors, we've had a little few conversations with, with Mr. Crumley's room, uh, students, because he's our health science instructor, um, but I haven't decided, I, he's, I'm waiting to put this, push this out until just before Christmas. Which is tough, but. But with our new high school and beyond plan, when we get that all updated, we would be able to now pull data based on students' interests and likes and career pathways, and then we can see who's interested in health sciences pathways, and now be able to personally invite them. Um, and that's the other thing that we're finding is, is if we can figure out what their per, uh, career pathways are and what their interest, and then we personally invite them to different events, we'll be able to have their connections.
So once, uh, and I'm just going down the medical road real quick, once, um, kids get certification as, for the CNA, will they be able to go to take that and work, like, at a nursing home in Monty? It's not, they won't be, like, have to be at Summit Pacific and work in the hospital?
That one, I, I couldn't answer one hundred percent sure, just because it depends, there are some, there's still some regulations with LNI, and I don't know one of them, even with the, the nursing assistant, there's some jobs they can do something.
It's the same issue with the registered apprenticeship, where you have to get the minor work variance, and minor work permit, and there's a lot of roles, I mean, that is one of the reasons why I think we have an opportunity, because it's, it's, it's a lot of paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to make it so your students can work in these adult jobs.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's not ju, I mean, there's a reason why nobody else is doing it, cause it's a whole other bureaucracy, so.
I just remember back in the day, uh, what occurs, I mean, half of our high school, I think, worked at the nursing home that was there with Summit as well.
Also, it's amazing nowadays, though, with all the regulations, so many businesses won't even hire somebody under the age of eighteen. Such a challenge.
It is a huge challenge.
Right.
And, and I will say, with our programs, we have some advocates that are working with LNI and workforce development, uh, to say, hey, here's some of the barriers that you guys are putting on us, and we want our kids to be safe, no, we have bands and butts. But also, at the same time, are we preventing them from truly getting skills and experiences to get them ready for a future career? And right now, we potentially are. So, another thing I wanted to say too with this, uh, nursing assistant program, these students will have to have the vaccinations all up to date. They're, you know, they will have to, um, have the HIPAA, I mean, they, they have to go through the series of just like any other person going into a nursing program. To be at hospital. So.
Good stuff.
Thank you, just hope we, we can pull it off, that's all, remember, it's not a dead deal yet.
Yeah. In the right direction.
It's in the right direction.
Thank you, Kristi. Uh, moving on, public comment, do we have any public comment tonight? Uh, unfinished business.
These are the, uh, we just have the forty-six, we're gonna need, uh, forty-one, ten, these are the second readings.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move for the approval of policy forty-sixty, distribution of materials, second final reading.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded for the approval of policy forty-sixty, distribution of materials, second final reading, there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy forty-one-ten, Citizen Advisory Committee and Task Forces, second and final reading.
Move for the approval of policy forty-one-ten, Citizens Advisory Committees and Task Force, second final reading.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded for the approval of policy forty-one-ten, Citizen Advisory Committees and Task Forces, second and final reading, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of fault policy forty-one-twenty, School Support Organization, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy thirty-one-twenty, School Support Organization, second and final reading.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded for approval of policy forty-one-twenty, School Support Organization, second and final reading, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, approval of girls' basketball booster fundraiser, booster representative, do we have, Tina, is that you? Let me pull it up here. So on the shoot-a-thon, that says ran by coaches. Um, fifty percent of the work of more has to be done by the parents.
Well, I mean, the shooting is ran by, it's during their practice, so the parents aren't get there.
Okay.
They shoot during their practice.
Okay, but I mean, the collection of-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The budgets.
Touch any of-
Perfect. Make sure.
They're just providing supervision.
Just wanna make sure.
It would be really questionable on whether or not we're violating, um, ASV law on that.
Mm-hmm.
If the students are doing the shooting, and the students are doing the work, and all that's happening, I think that would be, that would be an audit finding. That would be, it'd be against state law for us to do, cause the students are doing the work, they're doing the shooting to raise the money, which would make it an ASV event.
The boys and girls do it every year, and they've been doing it.
They have been doing it, and I, and I don't disagree with you on that, um, but these red flags have been coming up, and, um, rules are changing and laws are changing, and we have to be very careful, um, How we differentiate boosters and A S B. And that's why I said that with coaches. It kind of crosses that line a bit of, because the coaches are paid by the school district.
Well, if, I mean, because practices are closed to parents, but if it's an issue, possibly maybe brand new would be able to let. A parent within the last hour and observe. The shooting, if that's.
We've been doing a lot of scout training on our A S Bs. We've been shoring it up. So our A S B advisors just got back from the Wasbo conference on. What we can legally get paid away, like what we can legally do and what we can't. So we'll probably verse a lot of kind of shoring up. I would advise against approving without a tabling because I do think it would be an audit finding the fact that the students are shooting. I wouldn't just make it just the coaches, but the students are doing the work because they're the ones doing the shooting at the basketball. Which means since they're doing the work, it would be in direct violation of A S B law. The idea being that the booster is, is student earned money because the students did the work. The students were doing the shooting and then the booster would be, the state looks at it as though the booster is taking the money away from those kids who did the work. And it's meant to be their money. Under A S B law, we've actually have a standing meeting. Our next one is Friday and we haven't done it before. We're having standing meetings where we're giving those A S B groups the money. So the way A S B works is we have a lot of student accounts where students have the money. And it's in the student account. So like the students own the basketball money. That is their money. And then they get a vote on how that money gets spent and that's how A S B law is written. So there's been a big shoring up process on that. But it would be where I think the feeling is is hey, by doing it as a booster, we're keeping the money for the kids. The state would say, no, because that's an adult booster board in charge of the money. And if the kids are doing the work, the kids get to vote and decide how that money is spent. So the state would look at it as though those adults are taking the money from those kids. That's how the state would legally look at that.
Can I ask a question? So is it because it's based in the high school that it's being done? If it was outside, it's a car wash, it was all.
No, because the kids are doing it.
But wouldn't the kids be involved anyways?
No, they, the kids can't be involved. The kids can't be involved in any way in a booster fundraiser because if it was a car wash offsite and the kids are washing it. Technically, then that's supposed to be student made money too. So anything that the students are doing to raise the money means the money is supposed to be the student money. And then the students are actually, the basketball team is to vote. On how they want their money to be spent.
And that's actually changed since I was doing booster stuff. It was at the time it was. If the parents did fifty percent or more of the work, it was considered boosters. But now it's even less.
And I think that would still be the interpretation.
We're kind of at a catch twenty-two also because. The A S B or the school, I'm not sure who, the budgets for the sports are a lot lower now. So we do a lot of the. The boosters, we even buy basketballs for the team. Like we supplement what the school doesn't provide for them. So the more restrictions that are put on us, the less we can do for the kids. Because we're not out there trying to raise money so we can go buy stuff ourselves. It's all for the kids.
Um, to clarify, what the money puts in, the district has an account that they create that is a levy allocated amount. The students still have an A S B fundraising account that is separate. Those are not, they're not the same accounts. Um, I think it might make sense also, or as we're giving those pronouns, because the students are now getting them. There is a student A S B raised account that the students are in charge of, that that's their money. That they raise when they do sales or when they do fundraisers. That no one can spend that money for them. No adult can spend that money for that student money. Only students, so Kristi's pretty active with it. She has both F A skills, you would say, they vote on how they spend their student money. The other money you're talking about would be the levy money. So like property values went down by four point eight percent. It resulted in a two hundred seventy-six thousand dollar reduction in levy funding. So with the district functioning athletics with two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, right, because we collected two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars less of taxpayer money to cover that. That meant those athletic budgets and activity budgets went down. That's a different account.
So there's nothing that says you, you can't still do the shoot-a-thon. The, the shoot-a-thon cannot happen, but that money would go into A S B funds. And the kids would have to vote on what they did with those funds.
And the coach would coordinate it. It's been done before where coaches and players will, will do that, put into the A S B fund and then. Um, the coach then can have a meeting with the students. They can have, who's the secretary, who's the chairman? All of that, they can run through a motion, write that down, document it. Put in a, a purchase request and then the A S B executive group will approve it and then the process goes.
Lisa, how much money do we have sitting in those A S B accounts off the top of your head?
Two hundred, I think it's two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
There's two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars sitting in student account money that hasn't been spent because the students don't know how to spend their money. So we actually have added a Friday. So like there's always been this belief that if you do an A S B, like the district is taking the money from those students. That's not true. It's just been sitting in there. The issue is the students haven't known how to spend their money. So we have a standing Friday training and teaching the students on how to actually hold a vote. Be like this sports program would like to buy this, this type. So there's, I think there's just a big misunderstanding of what A S B and boosters and how A S B money is spent to a point where there's two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Sitting in an account that hasn't been spent because the students don't know how to spend their money. But that's a work with the students.
And the other question I have is on number four. So my understanding, there's two different types of youth basketball going on now. There's like the basketball league that's on Saturdays and then there's the. The youth basketball where like the kids help coach the team from the high school. Is that correct?
It, it happens right before. They're like back to back. So like the, the Saturday basketball kids are there and then the youth basketball kids just come in. And we go in and we start setting up concessions like first thing in the morning and then we get the concessions open and we keep it open all day.
Okay, see, I just. For me, my question would be that whoever is running whatever. Organization, youth program, running it, you know, the Saturday league basketball, they may want to do their own concessions.
They asked us to do it. They don't want to. And we, usually the boys don't want to. That's why I always say. For years, we've always shared, everything we do, we've always shared with the boy side. So like when we do games, if we have double headers, we just work it out together and we. Each take a double header. Like we always work our concession thing out, sharing fifty fifty. So with this, when the youth league asked us to do it. The boys, the last couple of years have not wanted to, but last year they. Did one or two weekends and then we did the rest. And I think this year they found out doing a little bit more, but we coordinate together with their boosters and then we just figure out who's going to do. Which one and we share it. But then at any time, if the youth people want to come to it, I would totally turn it back. Because I'm the one that works it every single weekend, from eight to four. So. We're not taking it from them. They're offering it to us.
And I just want to make sure that we weren't approving something that. And then have this other group settle. Wait a second.
No, no, that makes sense.
Fans, it's our, you know. And we want to do our own concession on the side, whatever that is.
And we do set up a jar, a donation jar for the youth, like if people want to put like a little tips in for the youth and we. Turn it into the youth program at the end of the concession.
My last. Comment I'll make on. Your request is the fifty fifty. Um, just make, I would just make sure that you, um, your group looks at the gambling laws. In regards to the fifty fifty raffle and any raffle.
Can't do more than two a year and, and you can't make more than a certain amount each time, which is why we do not do more than two a year because I don't want to deal with it.
Yeah, I'm just making sure. You are aware about being licensed, unlicensed and all.
We make sure we don't have to get the license.
So. So I, I think we moved to approve without the shoot-a-thon. So, and then the car wash is on there too. So we'll be clear about that too. You, you were clear about that, but I just.
Yeah, I think just that it's a parent car wash that there still could be.
The parents are.
Okay. I will move to approve girls' basketball booster fundraiser. Except for number.
Minus the shoot-a-thon.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, when will, like, because you said you're having a meeting and.
I would recommend actually to be more proactive. I would have a student take an A S B fundraiser request to Miss Elliott, the A S B advisor, and have the A S B prepared to vote and approve that. It was a benefit to it because not to unpack all of it, but. You can't even have the shoot-a-thon unless you book the gym and have insurance to cover the gym. So you would have to have third party insurance to pay for, to cover the gym protection. If the students just do it, the school district insurance covers them. The students get first right to the gym. They could use it over everybody else. I would honestly just run it as an A S B fundraiser. And then I made a note here to make sure that we are, we were making a point to be on top of ensuring all of those programs have printouts of their A S B accounts. So the students are getting printouts of how much money is in our A S B account for those team actions.
So the girls' basketball team would get that and then they would decide, so all the money that they raised for that, those girls would get to decide how they're spending it.
That's right.
I would probably start with the coach.
But I do know that we have a meeting with Miss Elliott on Friday. So it would. To be super proactive, it'd be prudent to have an A S B fundraiser request and to, uh, Miss Elliott and then the students do that.
The students just fill it out and do a request? They have to know the dates and times and things because the, the coach usually will coordinate.
Yeah, and that's kind of this big reason is the idea is that we're growing adults so that the students are kind of starting to learn to self advocate and understand that this is how I make our money. And this is how they make their money, right? And then this is how they get to spend their money that they raised. And that's really the interest of the state. The state wants to ensure that we're protecting those, those students' rights and how they're raising money and spending.
So I'm going to back up here and restate. There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of boys or girls' basketball booster fundraisers minus the shoot-a-thon. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of boys' basketball booster fundraisers. Do we have a representative here for boys' basketball?
I'm on Zoom.
Oh, hi Nicole.
Hi.
Nicole, off the top of my head, I'm trying to pull it up right now, but. I would. Say the same thing for your group in regards to the raffles. Um, you can only have two. You might want to check with the gambling commission laws.
Yes, yes.
Reading through them, I believe you can only have two and so your, um, the holiday cash raffle. One fifty fifty would suffice that, but I don't think you could do two fifty fifty raffles and the holiday cash raffle.
Okay. That's fine, yeah.
Same thing, true for number three.
Oh, and did you hear the discussion in regards to the free throw?
I sure did.
That's all I had on that one.
I'll move for the approval of boys' basketball booster fundraiser, um, minus three. Which is the free throw pledges. So.
Well, I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the booster, for the boys' basketball booster fundraisers minus. Number three, the free throw pledges. Is there any discussion?
I would echo the same point is that I just made a note. Um, that to have our A S B fiscal printouts for our meeting on Friday, to have an A S B fundraiser prepared to go. And again, I, I think as we start growing this. Uh, one thing that I think will be appreciated is the less red tape because, because again, our insurance covers those events. Insurance does not cover booster pub events. So booster pubs will need to have their own insurance when they do things. The students, they get our, so there's a lot less red tape for the students to do these events too, where it's much faster, much easier.
We, we do have insurance that was required for us to even turn in this paperwork. Um, to begin with, just, just to make a note of that, that, that is a requirement this year as it hasn't been in the past. So we did pay for that this year.
Perfect. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And then as, as we have students identify student events, they won't need the insurance and that is a big, that would be a big cost savings. They can just run their events.
Looking at this with the discussion. Should we change it or can we change it to one fifty fifty raffle and the holiday, holiday cash raffle?
Well, I think it's up to them because I mean, we're, we're approving the, uh, the. Potential, these are potential fundraisers technically. But it's up to them as a group to abide by whatever laws.
I would agree with that. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Approval of the Alma Performing Arts Booster Fundraisers. Do we have a representative? Junior drill, is that the winter drill?
Uh, it's winter drill.
The competition team, okay.
And I just found out tonight that Winter Trail wants to do one too. But that will submit. Submit another form when I actually get their dates.
So you're, there'll be two junior drill clinics within weeks of each other.
That's how it went last year. So there was a winter drill, which is more dance and then cheer, which is. Chilling.
Yeah. I didn't know that there were same time as you, but okay.
Yeah, I think they were like two or three leagues apart.
Yeah, it was.
It was, they were really close. Yes, it's actually beautiful. It's a lot of the, maybe in there.
But along those same lines, is that where? You're running into an A S B because the kids are actually, they're doing it at the school as.
I think that's going to be a big question. So like in the basketball lines, it flat out says the students are doing all the shooting for the application. Um, maybe that's kind of the question is, is who's doing the work?
I mean, yeah, based on previous experience with them, it's usually the. The, the kids themselves, the high schoolers are teaching the little kids and, yeah, I mean, you have a coach overseeing.
We have, we, uh, have parents come in to watch the kids. The, um, high schoolers are just teaching the dancing portion.
They're doing, they're doing more than fifty percent of the work.
Yeah, so if they're doing the work, it would have to be A S B.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of where it came up with on the, uh, basketball lines as well. Is it really spelled out in the app that the students were.
That's what we weren't sure because we have the parents that are helping monitor and wrangler and.
And you have to.
I think it would. Like I said, and I say, Gil, I have a note to have the A S B pronounced. I think it would benefit you to have it under A S B because if boosters runs the drill. You'll need to have your own insurance. But if A S B runs it, you don't need any insurance. Our insurance covers it. There's some, you know. Um, I think the big question is, is who's doing, the question's always going to be who does the work? If the kids do the work, it would be. They work for the money. It should be their money.
So a clarifying question is most of that money is used by the uniforms because they're so expensive. Can we do that out of A S B?
I mean, like, it's, that's where it's, they use the, we forgot, we personally have phones with Ben Freud or anything.
Yeah, the, there's a big, like I said, we said two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars are sitting in our A S B accounts. I think when I've spoken to coaches and programs, it's like, well, the district takes the money and they never get it. And then we have it all sitting in, I think the reality is more like. Students raise the money and then no one knows how to spend their money. So then it just sits in the bank account because no one knows, well, we're. Like I said, we have a note to give the student right now.
Is there, is there a handout or something that we, we have created? For the students to know the A S B thing or to hand out to boosters so they can help their kids advocate for their A S B money?
We have a, on our standing meetings, have like an education on how we're educating students on how to train. I don't know what we printed off.
I just wondered if it would be helpful.
I know that.
Like, hey, when we get our directors or coaches or, hey, we want to run this fundraiser. Hey, how about you guys run it through A S B? This is ones we can do.
That, that was where I was going. I was thinking some sort of a, like a flow chart or something that you'd know, right? Like this, this is going to fall under A S B. Now I can, you know, at least get the coach involved and the kids involved and then we're doing exactly what we're talking about, right? Now I can, you know, ha- at least get the coach involved and the kids involved, and then we're doing exactly what we're talking about, right? We're getting them active and spending their money.
Good idea. So like I said, we, we're meeting with them, I mean, I meet with them now on like one Friday a month, and then they have other standing meetings, because we realized that this is a big issue. I mean, like I said, the biggest issue is our students have money that they don't know how to spend.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what we're targeting this year.
So. Okay.
Um, so I'll move that we approve the performing arts, uh, booster, except for the junior drill at this time.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded for the, is there any further discussion?
I, I would, I mean, I just want to add in, I'll say the same thing. I would have an ASB fundraiser request approval being submitted, ready to go to Miss Elliott.
Yeah.
And again, if you probably just go home and talk to your own student.
I, I'm actually done. Supposed to stop by, go practice on the way, on the way. You took before I turn around and come back.
Right, okay.
Let me back up again. Been a motion made and seconded for the approval of Alma Performing Arts Booster Fundraisers minus junior drill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, approval of class of twenty twenty-seven booster fundraiser. Do we have a representative? Do you know? Give me just a second.
Looks like just one thing.
Oh, yeah, the cow bite, yeah.
Yes.
It's a great one.
It's worked great, and we do one thing a year, one and done.
One and done.
We will have enough money when we get there. We've literally contacted the, the gaming place, like directly, because the first year we were going to do just bingo, and we found out that with the amount of money, that wouldn't work. So now what we do is the bingo part, we actually donate, it's free. The bingo part is free, just for like liking us on Facebook. It's free, so that part, the cow doesn't decide really anything, except for something we're giving away for free. Then the raffle is the thing that we sell the tickets for.
Gotcha, okay.
So that way we didn't, like, cross any boundaries, and we also, people are excited to watch the thing.
Yeah, know that, you guys hit it out of the park with that one, in my opinion, so.
I will move for the approval of class twenty twenty-seven booster fundraiser.
I'll second.
Been a motion made and seconded for the approval of class of twenty twenty-seven booster fundraiser, is there any discussion?
I just want all the booster clubs to know, we are not against booster clubs. You know, we just want to make sure that the kids are getting their money. The parents are, uh, you know, we, as a district, we're all about the kids, and we appreciate all the work you guys do, um, to provide additional funding for all of the kids' needs. So I just want you guys to know that.
Yeah, and to piggyback off of that, I have probably fifteen drill uniforms in closets. I know how expensive they are.
Yeah, and, and to just reinforce all that, we really want to work with you too. So if there's a way that we can make this easier for you, let us know, like a flow chart, handout, that's what we're here for. We're not here to just hand down a verdict.
All right, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of class of twenty twenty-nine booster fundraisers. Do we have a representative for that one?
I don't see many with their hand up, but it is a pretty simplistic, it's just the multiple dances.
Oh, that's right.
I'll move for the approval of the class of twenty twenty-nine. I never think I'd hear myself say that, parent booster.
I'll second.
And just for good measure, can I clarify the difference? The students attending the dance are the ones working to raise the money. They're attending, the parents are doing the work.
I just wanted to know, but all these kids are going, what's the difference?
Been a motion made and seconded for the approval of the class of twenty twenty-nine booster fundraisers, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Alma Wrestling Booster Club fundraisers. So representatives? Is there anybody online?
I don't have anyone online. Kind of the same.
It's the freestyle season and the, um,
The tournament.
Fifty, fifty rappel, and then the tournament.
Yeah, and then concessions.
Yeah. But I think that's all.
Parent driven.
Parent driven.
Yeah. I'll make a motion for the approval of the Alma Wrestling Club fundraiser.
Second.
Has been a motion made and seconded for the approval of Alma Wrestling Booster Club fundraisers, is there any discussion?
And just, you know, uh, obviously double check on all that.
Yeah, I mean, um, I haven't been acknowledged, because
Yeah.
both my kids wrestle, so I get to sit on every single chat. That's generally, they all call for the parents to do all day. So I can't say that the parents do the work on that one.
And then just the fifty-fifty, they can only do two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not on, on any boards, because that would be unethical. Just get to sit on all the chats as my kids are.
But you will make sure that they are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of VIBA agreements.
Um, this is just the standard, uh, VIBA agreements voted on by staff. Um, staff have another contract, uh, UTO and, um, on ESP to have VIBA based upon.
It's when they retire at retirement, whether they get a cash payout or it goes into a sick leave. So they vote on it, and usually they'll check with who they know is retiring to kind of vote the way the retirees. Um, to answer your earlier question, fine. Our policy says a motion passes when a majority of those members present and voting are in favor, so Chris was correct.
So we have good late party trophies.
What I'm saying is I can't abstain.
Yes, I am, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But you don't have to. I'll move for the approval of the VIBA agreements.
I'm going to abstain.
So I'll second that. Is that correct, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, so there've been a motion made and seconded for the approval of VIBA agreements. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to recover or not recover levy dollars.
So there was a property value reduction, which resulted in on the current draw of a reduction of sixty thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. So that meant the district has paid less than that amount.
Am I okay to correct you?
Yeah, go ahead, direction.
Okay, so, um, people will go in and get their property reappraised. So they levy us for three million dollars. If people go in and get their property reduced, now they're still an ode to us. So everybody who's gone in and got their property reevalued, that's how much was left on the table. So now we have a right to collect that whole three million. So they're saying you have a right to this, that we're not collecting. You have a choice to go back and collect it, or you can say, no, we're not going to do it. We're not going to go back to the voters and collect this money. Does that make sense? So we have a right to three million. My house is worth three hundred, I don't agree with the county treasures. I go back and I get it moved to two fifty. Now my tax is lower. That fifty thousand they didn't collect the tax on is what we got shorted. So they're taking everything we were shorted because of reappraisals and saying we still have a right to collect this up to or three million. Do you want to go spread this amongst the voters and collect? So do they spread that? We have never, ever gone back to the voters. Okay, I was going to say, what does that? Even when Duke, when they went back and got reappraised and it was lowered by a million dollars, we did not go back and get that money. We're talking about sixty thousand three hundred seventy.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do we vote on this? We vote to decline or vote to accept, right? We want, we don't want to go to the voters.
It's a definite guess, you want to vote to approve to, um, to either recover or not recover. So your motion would be either I move to recover, or am I, I move to not recover? Historically, we have not recovered, because it means voters get a tax bill from the school district, which doesn't make them feel warm and fuzzy, and then generally negatively impacts.
Doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy either.
But it does mean by voting no, and, you know, there's an acknowledgement like, hey, we have less money for basketballs. Well, that's sixty thousand dollars that goes down, that buys those, that sporting equipment, because that's where that money goes.
So there is. She sits here and asks us if you do events.
But the question is always like, why is there less? Well, this is an example of where that money is from. But then it's also with the acknowledgement that we could get the sixty thousand dollars back. So then it means every voter is going to get a tax bill, and it generally doesn't look good report.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve to not recover levy dollars.
Second.
There've been a motion made and seconded to not recover levy dollars. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This discussion and approval of policy twenty-four ten, high school graduation requirements, first reading?
This is going to just be a modification with the WASD updates.
When I said updated legal references for house bill?
Just updating the legal references for the graduation.
Yeah, it had some like inclusion stuff. Yeah. I'll move for the approval of policy twenty-four ten, high school graduation requirements, first reading.
I'll second that.
Been a motion made and seconded for the approval of policy twenty-four ten, high school graduation requirements, first reading? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy thirty-two oh five, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of students prohibited, first reading?
Have a complete and total redo on, on the bulk of the board policy as recommended by WASD to bring it in line with RCW forty-nine sixty and WAC one sixty-two, you know, so an update in the state laws, and then an update on the policy as part of the alignment to state law.
This must be a fairly recent update, because I actually, uh, didn't find a district that had an update.
Yeah, I think this one's pretty recent.
Yeah.
We've been doing good and staying up on our WASD recommendations.
I'll move for the approval of policy thirty-two oh five, sex discrimination, sex-based harassment of students prohibited, first reading?
Second.
An emotion made and seconded for approval of policy thirty-two oh five, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of students prohibited, first reading? Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy thirty-two forty-one, student discipline, first reading?
Just had another WASD recommended update, it's kind of a, more of a shoring up than a lengthening, so.
One of these, I thought it was odd that we, it strikes out one, but it doesn't. I don't know if that's an accident.
You know, I have a, yeah, I think that's an accident, because it's not in yellow.
Yeah, I noticed that, but it has a strike through, so.
Yeah, I think all, I think barring that, all changes are with what's in yellow.
Okay.
That one wouldn't be.
Mike, what are you referring to?
Uh, so if you look at policy thirty-two forty-one, it says purpose of the policy and accompanying procedures include one, and then it's lined out. But it's not in yellow.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah. I usually just look for the yellow.
I know, me too, and then all of a sudden, I was like, why is number one have a strike through it? I, I'll move for the approval of policy thirty-two forty-one, student discipline, first reading. Um, I'm trying to figure out how to say this without making a long-winded for you.
I'll second that.
Yeah, let's just say I'll move for the approval of policy thirty-two forty-one, um, without striking number one.
Been a motion made and seconded for the approval of policy thirty-two forty-one, student discipline, first reading? Without striking number one. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy thirty-two forty-six, restraint, isolation, and other uses of reasonable force, first reading?
Um, this is just an update with RCWs minus the elimination of the quotations around imminent likelihood of serious harm. So there's a punctuation modification.
It must mean something very different legally.
I'll move for the approval of policy thirty-two forty-six, restraint, isolation, and other uses of reasonable force, first reading?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for policy thirty-two forty-six, restraint, isolation, and other uses of reasonable force. Is there any discussion? Um, Chris, I have a question on this one.
Yes.
Um, are staff trained?
Yes. We have to do per our insurance company, it's called right response.
Right response training, okay. I think we talked about that before, and that's why I was, yeah, okay, now I remember. All right.
I think we went over this one before, earlier last year.
Something, yeah, like that. Okay. Um.
That's required in all staff members who work with students, where like restraint might become necessary, or required to become, uh, right response.
Well, that would probably be everybody.
Um, generally staff that are working with the students, yeah. No, not everybody.
No.
Generally staff.
You have a situation like that, you don't necessarily allow just anybody to handle it.
Yeah, it's, it's specific, you know, specific staff members that are trained.
We're not the specialist, we'll do it.
Got you, okay.
Kids out, and someone coming in.
My brain goes straight to what, what I do, so.
And it's not as prevalent, I mean, when we have an issue where there's a violent outburst, it's generally within control of classrooms.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move to table, um, policy forty-two fifteen, forty-two thirty-five, and forty-two sixty-five, until we have the
Expert.
Expert back to explain to us, um, policy changes.
I'll second that.
Been a motion made and seconded to table policies forty-two fifteen, forty-two thirty-five, and forty-two sixty-five. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy five zero one one, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of district staff prohibited, first reading?
This is a similar policy modification, but it's in the five thousand, so where the last one was for student, this one is for staff. And this would be, uh, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment, um, with many of the same updates and, uh, RCWs.
That looks like it lengthened it extensively. I'll move for the approval, policy fifty eleven, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of district staff prohibited.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded for the approval of policy fifty eleven, sex discrimination, sex-based harassment of district staff prohibited? Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy sixty-two twenty, bid or request for proposal requirements, first reading?
Brings this new alignment with state senate bill fifty-two sixty-eight predominantly around the interlocal cooperation act and the ability to engage in cooperative purchasing agreements.
I'll move for the approval of policy sixty-two twenty, bid or request for proposal requirements, first reading?
I'll second.
Been a motion made and seconded for the approval of policy sixty-two twenty, bid or request for proposal requirements, first reading? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, reports, good of the order.
Well, we give a shout out to the, uh, Lady Eagle Soccer Team, who just started nine minutes ago in their state playoff game. I haven't heard how the start is going, it's only eight minutes in, so.
We had one requirement for, uh, board member Smith's, uh, um, big, if you know, absence was to make sure that we're getting score updates.
Well, I thought it would be longer, so we get score updates, I actually thought about putting it on, but, uh, I don't even know. Well, I thought it would be longer, so we'd get score updates, I actually thought about putting it on, but, uh, I don't even know if they're starting yet. I'll, I'll know here in a second, after somebody else gives a great update.
Um, I know, uh, Christie's gone, but the district did get rep- recognized by District Administration Magazine, it's the major publication for, um, school districts, on, uh, currently as a nomination finalist for district distinction for how the career pathways have been built as a national model. So, uh, we'll find out in December if we are career pathways and the career pathway models we've been designing is, is the national model for District Administration.
Sounds like they're off to a good start, by the way. Says that we're competing well, that's, that's the text I got back.
The Eagles.
Yeah.
I don't have anything.
All right, give everybody the night back.
All right, we, yeah.
Make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.